Welcome to the Byram Hills Board of Education meeting on Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. We call this meeting to order at 6:56 PM and would ask for our motion to go into executive session to talk about a fair number of items. 2.1 Legal Matter Claims Auditor, 2.2 Legal Matter Internal Auditor, 2.3 Legal Matter Individual Students, 2.4 Negotiations Matter CSEA, 2.5 Board of Education Matter Superintendent's Evaluation, 2.6 Contract Matter Individual Employee, 2.7 Board of Education Matter Board Officers, and 2.8 Contract Matter Individual Employee.
Subtle.
Second.
All in favor? All right, we will be back.
We're missing.
Oh, we are. You have a horn. Let's start.
The United States is a republic, and we are a public, which is one nation under God, and it is all with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome tonight. Good to see everyone. And we have a very excellent and celebratory thing on the agenda around tenure. We're going to get to that in just a minute. We just have a little bit of board business to do first. And before we do that, I would just ask if there are any comments from the public regarding any item that's not on tonight's agenda? All right, hearing none. I just asked for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda with two changes to it, two adjustments, just removal of 2.1 Legal Matter Claims Auditor and 2.2 Legal Matter Internal Auditor.
Subtle.
Second.
All in favor? All right. And then a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda. 6.1, which is Personnel, 7.1, which is Special Services, and then 8.1, this. Second. All in favor? All right. And with that, I just want to say a thank you.
A very special thing.
To, oh, wait, a second. But first, a thank you to the PTSA for, yeah, two donations, a $35,000 donation for the high school for the electronic sign, and then a donation of books from the PTSA for our schools, from actually multiple families. So we appreciate that. There were a good number of families that donated books. So, and then the second thing we did in that consent agenda is we just tenured a very special group of people that are here with us tonight. So we have, first, our own Gina Cunningham from the district office. We have a group working with so closely, and my gosh, I mean, over the last couple of years, the jobs that you did that you never thought that you would have to do, that may not have been in that tenure manual, but we know how indispensable you were to keep this district running. And we so appreciate the partnership, and we've enjoyed working with you and getting to know you better. And it's just so great to see you perform at such an amazing level, and we're very proud of being able to give you tenure today.
Thanks.
And then we have, and I feel like I've done this before.
Yeah. See that channel.
Peggy McInerney and David Mack, who are, at this point, veterans of the district and are brave in attempting new roles and new experiences which necessitates this process again. So part of the trust is you put that in the district, and we put that in you. And it's a great, you know, two-way street, and to see you back tonight and to be able to do this in a celebratory way is just a great thing to see. And we're so excited that next year you will be at the helm of two very important buildings with lots of our young students, and wish you all the best for a wonderful summer and then just a great fall, and look forward to collaborating with you in your new roles. And then we have Kira Hunt, and we have Kelly Moriarty from fourth grade and from the high school, respectively. And lots of supporters and students in the audience, which is awesome to see. And you've both made a mark on our district in the short time that you've been with us, and we're so excited about the many years you both have ahead to, you know, make the impact that you've already made. But as the years go by with more and more and more students that come through our district, they're going to be very, very fortunate to cross your paths and to have you interact with them and build relationships with them as you have already clearly in your short time here. And, you know, we take tenure really seriously at Byram Hills, and it's, it really is a mark of excellence, and it's a rigorous process, and we know that. And so, you know, you being here tonight is a real testament to the job that you've done and that we're confident that you'll continue to do. And we look forward to having a long-term partnership with you in the district.
We will talk more about tenure during the tenure section of our agenda for tonight. So I will speak more about it in a few minutes, but I also wanted to welcome some people who are here who are new to the district. And this is a really great night for you to be here, whether you're new to the district or you're new to roles in the district. We do have people who come to Byram Hills and stay. And I think for anybody who's actually new to the district coming here tonight, seeing our tenure recipients, many of them, Peggy, how many, how many is this now? Three? Three? So listen, there are four boys, so we need one more tenure out of you before we leave. They each get, they each get your little tenure apple, right? You have one more apple to get. But you'll see that people change roles in this district, that they learn and grow, and that's what pretty much makes this a special place. So tonight, I want to welcome, in the back, we have Lindsay Bordenaro. Lindsay, if you weren't standing up, I swear I'll never do this to you. But I might lie. Lindsay will be a kindergarten teacher in Coman Hill this coming year. She's elementary, special education, and literacy certified, and she comes to us with quite a few years of experience in the Board of Education. And with her is her very proud mother, Margaret, who happens to work in the district. I love when I find that out after we've made a candidate an offer. And I was like, oh, that's great. Welcome, Lindsay. We're looking forward to seeing you at Coman Hill.
Thank you.
The next person I want to welcome here tonight is Danielle Brooks. Not a new face, Danielle. Danielle was once my student, and she has been working in the district for many years. You probably know her from the plays and everything else that she's done at the middle school and the high school with all of the sets. She's also been working in the technology department for a very long time and now has earned her place in the HCC Technology Department. So congratulations, Danielle. We also have Lindsay McHale here tonight. Lindsay! Lindsay will be switching gears and going into a grade three gen, just a regular grade three class, going from her special education role to a classroom teacher role. And that is something that we know that Lindsay can do with her great knowledge of kids and their learning needs. Lindsay, I've been watching you for years, you know. I've been in her classroom all the time. I never, I was blown away when Lindsay was teaching a special class of some of our most severely disabled students, and every single child was actively involved because she worked with her teacher aides. They were teachers in that class. And what I saw happen in that class was pretty short of spectacular. So Lindsay, we know you can do anything you want to put your mind to, and we're really glad that you're choosing to continue to grow here and doing that with us. So congrats, Lindsay. And Alyssa Leahy. Hey, Alyssa. You know, some people have bad things happen to them because of COVID. We had a good thing happen to us, and that's that Alyssa came to join us. So Alyssa was here in some temporary higher capacity during our COVID time, and she stayed on with us, and now she is elementary certified, and she will be at Wampus for grade three. So nice, nice trial run. If she can be successful during COVID in a new school, can do anything. Alyssa, congrats. And Chris Paliza. Fred Rowe, President. Will be a new Wampus fourth grade teacher. He comes to us, he currently is an elementary special educator and has spent a year, a lifetime in the surface of our country. So Chris, thank you. He was a platoon leader. He was actually in Iraq, did tours of duty in Iraq, and came back to his passion, which is to work with kids, and has been doing so. So we were really lucky that he also cast his eyes toward Byram Hills, and here you are. So congratulations. And then two other things that happened on the consent agenda, not so happy. We had two teachers who gave us letters for retirement. So we wish Ellen Med, a school psychologist at the high school, and Reka Singh, our elementary school. I know, I just got a couple, ah. Reka Singh at the elementary school at Coman Hill in the technology department, they are retiring. So I just wanted to recognize them tonight because they are two very special people and were here after me and are leaving before me. I keep saying that, but only because it's unreal. It's like, how does that even happen? So there we are for the consent agenda for now, and we can move on.
Yep. All right, so I'm going to hand it over to you.
Oh, to me again? Oh, yay! All right, I'm ready. All right, recognition of our tenure candidates. Ah, all right. So what does tenure mean in a place like Byram Hills? It means that you are a leader, that you have come here, you have learned whatever you could learn from others, and you've paid it back tenfold. And you're continuing to do that for the people you work with every day and the people who come after you began, right? People who are tenured in Byram Hills are tenured because they've been examples of commitment. It takes a lot to commit yourself every single day to knowing every single child that you are responsible for, for knowing your colleagues, knowing how to work with them, knowing what to work on, to go through changes in a school district. I mean, I think about some of our tenure recipients here who have moved classrooms, moved buildings, have taken on different positions and different roles. And it means just, you know, doing the Peggy McInerney way, which is you go where you're needed, right? And you're doing what's needed to keep the organization strong. So I am going to start with Peggy McInerney, a good friend and a good colleague, and to talk a little bit about the work that Peggy has done over the years. It isn't just that Peggy was a great Coman Hill principal at one point. It was that the district at that time needed somebody who could come to the district office, learn about and support HR during a time when I was coming in as a new superintendent. Peggy came to the district office, had the greatest level of experience and knowledge of a K-12 educational system. We had an opening for an elementary principal at Wampus, and Wampus needed a great leader. And Peggy said, I want to go, right? Like, so what, what does that mean in a district when you're an assistant to the superintendent and you say, I want to go leave that building, I know the work that needs to happen there, I know the people that are in that building, I care about them, and I want to make sure that it's done to the best level it could be done? So Peggy leaves and goes to Wampus, and then Coman Hill comes along, and Peggy goes to Coman Hill. So this is, this is what happens in a district like ours. You work that hard, you don't have to prove yourself, but you do over and over again. You go where the district needs you to go to do the jobs that need to be done, and you sacrifice tenure every single time because you trust in this organization and you know the organization trusts in you. So Peggy, congratulations for the third time on being tenured. You'll have to take one more job to get one more tenure apple for one of your sons. I will move over to Dave, who has been our assistant principal at Wampus. He started out as a guidance chairperson at the middle school, really knowing that transition for kids from Wampus to Crittenden. And he came down to Wampus to work with Peggy, to be one of the most extraordinary assistant principals that Wampus has ever seen. And Dave's level of commitment to the teachers, to the staff, and to the kids is apparent, and he's a learner. I think that Dave and I have had some of the most honest conversations about growth, right? What does it take? I remember years ago when you were a guidance counselor, what does it take to grow? What does it take to reflect? What does it take to learn what this organization needs so that you are better helping everybody else? And Dave, you brought it every single time, and we are so excited that you are not only going to be the principal of Wampus Elementary School, but that tonight we are recognizing, the board is recognizing, that you are deserving of tenure as an assistant principal. Thank you for all your work, Dave. I have to work my way around the room. All right. So we have, I could go to Kelly Moriarty. Do you want me to go to her next? All right. All right. Kelly Moriarty. Kelly, I'm so sorry, but at first I didn't go into your classroom at all because Peggy raved about you, right? And then I went in there and I found out what was going on, and I never seemed to leave after that. So Kelly is familiar with me coming into the class, with the work that she's been doing with Nicole. You have an incredible culture that happens in that room. I love the work that the kids are doing. When you go into your class, kids are not in school. Kids are having fun learning, right? It's a, it's a very different feeling and experience. So I just want to say that you, you obviously, through the years that you spent prior to coming to Byram Hills, invested in some really good professional development because you did not come meeting everyone else. You came to learn and to share, and to be able to come and do that from the beginning is pretty extraordinary. It's a, it's a different place. Every school district is different. I'm, I think, an okay superintendent here, but I might not be one somewhere else, right? But to be able to transition from one school district to another like that and to do it in the way that you have and to become a leader in your own right with your colleagues right now is amazing. So congratulations to you and really well deserved. Kira. Kira, I want to come back to you in my next life. Kira, can you stand up, please? You're so far back, we can't see you. Kira came to Byram Hills High School in the guidance department and immediately became the person for all freshmen. I don't know what your life was like growing up. I want your parents to tell me some stories later, but obviously someone gave you some talents for dealing with people in transition. Because imagine that she gets almost 200 transitioning individuals that she has to help cross over the border to 10th grade, right?
During COVID.
During COVID, right. And everything else. Kira, you wrote me a note, and she was talking about, about the relationship, like that she was grateful that I knew who she was, right? That I know her work with kids and what that means in a district like this. But I want you to know something. You opened yourself up to that relationship, which is something that all of our kids seem to see in you. And it's why our kids are well-adjusted during COVID. They love you, they go to you. She's like a child magnet. And I know that you are learning so much all the time. Mike is here to celebrate you tonight. Your parents are here to celebrate you tonight. My former student, your boyfriend, is here to celebrate. I'm not really sure if we could say it in many more ways, that you are such a beautiful fit for this school community because of your level of care. So thank you so much, Kira. And I believe at this point there's a presentation to be made to Kira Hunt. Am I wrong or am I right?
Emily, Ashley.
Am I right? You have some well wishers who brought you flowers. Take note, Billy, take note. All right. And last but not least, you know, sorry, Gina.
You're too close.
Gina, Gina, Gina. Ira.
Ira.
All right. So a few words about Gina. After all this, you still like me. You still.
Channeling Ira and Sally Field.
And Sally Field. You like me. Gina, I, I have so many words for you tonight, and I know that the last thing that you like is all eyes on Gina. And that is probably one of the most amazing things about you. Gina is a, is a machine. Let's just start there. I'm thinking of something and Gina's producing it for me. So I came in and I was like, okay, who's here? I have to look around here. Who's here? I have to make sure that I'm, I'm sitting everybody, and Gina goes, I left you a sheet? This is Gina, right? It's, it's thoughtfulness all the time in every way. I know that right now you took on a position that you had no knowledge of a couple of years ago. I went to see Gina in her office and I said, well, you know, what do you think about coming to the district office and being the assistant to the superintendent? And she said, what did you say? I said, all right, just think about it. She said, no, no, I just have to ask you a serious question. Do you really think I can do that? Do you think I can do that? Not only did I think you could do it, I knew you could do it. The position that you're in right now requires the best assistant principal of all time. It requires a person who is a humanitarian, who cares about people who are around you. You wouldn't believe the stuff Gina hears on a daily basis. I know I used to be in that position, and she cares about every single person who brings them, brings her their situation. You know the law. Remember those days where you couldn't, you were like, I don't know, Jen, one day am I going to be able to answer a question without having to look it up, without having to ask you, without having to do that? And you just took it in stride. This was a learning curve like no other. I know because I was in that position once before, and I don't know what I would do without you for this partnership. So I appreciate you as a colleague, as a friend, as a mother, as a human being to all of us, Gina. You're the best. Is that it? Can I also say that Lisa Palmer's here? We celebrated her before, and she's here with her new principal, Dave, to celebrate her tenure, you know? Anybody else in the crowd that I forgot?
Leslie.
We have all our teenagers. Yes, I know. Leslie Wilby are here, Nicole Redini's here. It's just awesome. Everybody in the back row, who you should stand so he can see you. Oh my God, Margarita, I didn't know you were here, and I've been busting on your side. And that's fine. The whole guidance department, Michael Grab is back, that's great. Chris Walsh back there, thank you. Wow. It's a special place, and this is a great room right now. And if anybody wonders what it is, why it's worth doing hard work, this is it, right? Because we have these moments we can celebrate you. So thank you, everybody.
I remember, oh, no, go ahead. I remember first coming onto the board and the first time I came to, you know, this meeting and listening to, you know, the description of the, of the tenure candidates and the celebration that happened, and the people that came in terms of families and colleagues and students. I was really odd, and I think that was really one of the things that was most profound about this district, is just a, a history of how this has happened, you know, before us, and it'll happen after us, but we're all part of this, you know, this organization that is really amazing. And it comes down to the relationships that we all build together and the culture that we build here. And I think your words about, about all of our, our tenure candidates were, you know, nothing short of inspiring and certainly not surprising, given we know how amazing they all are in the job that they've done. But I think we should all just, you know, relish in the fact that we can celebrate this together and that we're just so glad, you know, to be here with you. And if we don't see some of you, or if I don't see some of you between now and this summer, I hope you all have a wonderful and restful and great summer, and we look forward to a great school year again next year.
Yes. Thank you to your families who came out.
Tenure candidates, I think we want to get a photograph with you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we'll take a two-minute break, so anybody that wants to stay is welcome, but...
Lisa, do you want new folks as well?
And we are, I do 10 unfinished business policies. We have a fair number of policies.
You do. Want to thank the policy committee for all their work. It's been a lot of work this year. So we have, go through in detail the first reads, and then if you have any questions on the second reads as well, that we went over last meeting, you can certainly ask us. So I'll first talk about Policy 1400, Public Complaints. This policy was rewritten to simplify the public complaint portion and put the Title I complaints into its own policy. So I'll go over that in a moment because we're proposing a new policy for the federally-funded program. So the public complaints is a policy that provides the right for community members to, to bring forward any issues they may have about the district's instructional programs, materials, operations, and it's, those that might not be addressed in other policies. If you look down across references, you see several policies that are about very specific complaints about sexual harassment, equal opportunity, bullying. So there are specific complaints in those areas. So this is the policy sort of to catch any other complaints that a community member may want to bring forward. It talks about the procedures for that. It is always our goal to try to address complaints at the closest level where they're occurring. For example, as mentioned in this policy, if someone is complaining about, say, our transportation services, we would want them to contact the director of transportation first. And people to sort of climb up the hierarchy should they feel like their concerns are not being addressed, then to go to the supervisor after that. If they have a complaint about something in the classroom, first trying to contact the teacher, and then if they're not satisfied, contacting the chairperson or director of the program, and then the principal, and finally to the district office. So we like to try to resolve things as close to where the issue exists as possible. If a parent is not satisfied with that, the policy asks that they can refer to the board in writing to, to register a complaint and a concern, and we will address it appropriately. So this policy sort of outlines that. Taking up the federally-funded piece, this sort of simplifies it, makes it clear for the procedures for parents, and also cross-referencing those other policies where that might be specific for certain complaints. Then Policy 1405 is the new policy, complaints about certain federally-funded programs. So this policy was outlined in the previous one and now put into its own policy. The language has changed a little bit, and it lists the specific federally-funded programs that, that parents can file complaints about. This outlines the procedures for how to file a complaint and the address of where to contact the state education department to file those complaints. If parents feel like we're violating a law, a rule, or a regulation around the distribution of funds or how we're administering federally-funded programs. So it's specific to that. So I think it makes it more clear in terms of the policies where parents can go and get the information they need. So those are two policies for a first read, and then Gina will go over a lot of policies for first read.
So the next one for first read is Executive Sessions, Policy 2330. And this was just not too long ago, recently reviewed and adopted in 2018. Executive Session Policy really outlines the right for the Board of Education to meet an executive session. You're allowed to ask any staff member or any other person who is deemed appropriate to enter into that session with you for discussion purposes only. They, in the policy, we list some of the matters that can be considered to be discussed in executive sessions, such as any public safety concerns, any proposed or current litigation, such items as like the acquisition or sale of any property and some additional items as well. The policy also outlines that the only action that in executive session that you may take is if there is any disciplinary actions or proceedings against a tenured teacher. The main edit in this particular policy that we just had revised was in the last paragraph where it talks about information that is discussed in executive session. You know, it does, we did add in there that disclosure of such information obviously is confidential, except in the circumstances where it involves law enforcement or when there's any pending legal investigation and possible action that needs to be taken, or when a board member is required to reveal any information in a court case. That's really the only main change in that policy, just putting in that disclosure piece about what may be revealed in the event that there is an investigation or court. And then the last policy for first read is Policy 2160, the Code of Ethics. And again, similarly, this was also recently, relatively recently reviewed and adopted in 2018 with one minor change. That's identical to the previous policy that I just mentioned, but again, our Code of Ethics. ethics applies to all board members as well as employees so that we ensure that any of our interests are not called into question in terms of the integrity of the management or the operations of the school district. There's many areas in the policy that are identified as conflicts of interest such as entering into contracts that may jeopardize or interfere with your role as a board member or an employee. Receiving gifts and there's a monetary amount of $75 that is the maximum amount in order to receive, whether it's in the form of money or a loan or services, et cetera. But again, number three, confidential information. This again states here that anything that's confidential for board members that's discussed, that you may disclose that information, again, pending any legal investigation if law enforcement is involved and/or if any of you or an employee were to have to testify in a court case. Also, it just talks about our responsibility in terms of ensuring that all of us, employees and board members, have a copy of the code of ethics and are signing off on our understanding of what they are and those conflicts of interest that are outlined in the policy.
And then for second read, which we've reviewed at the last meeting, there's policy 4750, promotion and retention of students, policy 1230, public comments at board meetings, and policy 1420R, complaints about curricular or instructional materials regulation. And then one policy marked for deletion is 2265, which is school-based play.
Any questions? Any questions on the policy?
Very kind.
Yes, thank you.
All right. I would ask for a motion to approve the first read of 1400, 1405, 2330, and 2160, the second read of 4750, 1230, 1420R, and then 2265 marked for deletion.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Thanks to all the work from the policy committee. Long list to end the year. That's probably it for this year of the policies, right? Because next, yep. Well, thanks for everybody's work.
We'll only have second reads.
Policy committee continues to really run incredibly well, so we all appreciate it. Okay, so we go to 11.1, which is proposed experimental organizational change. Gina, is that you?
Yep. So we're bringing this forward tonight because we have applied twice before in 2012 and 2017 for the experimental middle school status. Let me just explain a little background in terms of what that means and certification areas. We have a middle school, obviously, that's comprised of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Our teachers who are certified in sixth grade vary from seventh and eighth grade. So we have, we have teachers, a lot of teachers that are certified elementary, which is really a certification from one to six. And then our seventh and eighth grade teachers may be certified professionally in one specific content area, seven to 12, a science, a social studies, et cetera. This application and this acceptance of this application in terms of our status allows us to assign a seventh or eighth grade, I'm just using this as an example, English teacher to teach sixth grade even though they're not elementary certified, and vice versa, a sixth grade teacher to be able to teach a content area in seventh and eighth grade. So it really allows us to preserve our team status. You know, we are multiple teams on grade levels that have a social studies, science, English, and language arts teacher, and this allows some flexibility in preserving that team model that we'd like to continue.
And look at the teachers who support it.
Yes, I, thanks, Jen. I was just going to say, there's several pieces of this application, one being that our teachers association has to write a letter as well to the state that accompanies our letter from the district requesting this and that they are in agreement of it. Also, we send a list of all our teachers that this may affect at the middle school. And then finally, if you were to approve our request for this application, we send that as well to the state.
And we've been doing this since 2017.
Well, yep, since 2012. We initially, five, we're every five years.
Just the last one was 2017, okay.
Has the application process changed at all or is it all the same?
Yeah, it's the same requirements in terms of the documentation that they're asking for.
And this is the best initiative of all the children and our teaching staff?
For sure, yeah.
So for example, remember when we had a team that was split between seventh and eighth grade because we had too many kids? Well, imagine if we needed that between sixth and seventh grade, if we needed that bridge of kids who were coming through, like that would enable us to do that.
And most of our seventh and eighth grade teachers who TJ content area also have what they call an extension. So I might be a social studies, seven to 12 certified teacher, but I also have my five through nine extension which allows me to go from fifth grade to ninth grade. But this just covers us for anyone who may not. And then again, like Jen was saying, this allows for flexibility amongst the grade levels.
Does this sound good?
Yeah.
Does anybody have any other questions? All right, motion to approve. So moved. Second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, Gina.
Thank you.
And thank you to everyone who helped you get this through.
Environmental science.
Environmental science. So I think it was back in December, you approved a new course at the high school for advanced placement environmental science. So we're excited to be offering that course. And this is the textbook for that course, so.
Was there good interest in the course?
There is. I actually don't recall what the enrollment is, but yes, I think there is strong, strong interest in the course, so we're excited about it. So this is a textbook. Deb Kay, our science chairperson, led a review with Bill Torden, who will be the teacher of this course next year, surveyed a bunch of textbooks aligned to the environmental science. This book in particular is a really high caliber book. It is written for the advanced placement course. It's environmental science for the AP course is the title of the book. So it's written on a really high level, which is great for students, but also very accessible. And also what was really attractive to it is it has a lot of electronic resources for students and a lot of opportunity to differentiate, to meet students' needs. You can look at the checklist in your packet, which shows that it rates really highly. And I met with Deb to review the book. It looks like a really great resource. And Jen and I do recommend it for adoption.
Any questions on the form that was in the packet or for Tim? Okay. Motion to approve the adoption of the environmental sciences, next one.
Second.
All in favor? You may be next too, Tim. I'm not, Tim, I'm not sure.
Yes, site-based, yeah. So at the end of the year, we had a really great district-wide site-based team meetings this year. We looked at our character education principles.
And Tim, maybe just before you go into the substance, just like a minute about site-based because it's fairly unique. I mean, at one point, it was a little more widespread in the country, but talk a little about the history and like why we still have site-based in the purpose of it.
Sure, thanks, yes. Yeah, so the history of site-based was back in the 90s when school districts used to be run centrally, sometimes central office. It was a movement to get parents more involved and have decisions made more at the local level and the school-based level. So thus comes along, site-based is meaning having teams that get involved in curricular programs at the building level. So it was a way to sort of spread out the decision-making from central office to school-based decision-making. And New York had a regulation on it and the policy that you just approved to remove was one that there's no regulation anymore in New York. So they got rid of the regulation on mandating site-based teams. So it was in place for about 20 to 25 years. We will maintain our site-based team because I think it's really embedded in our culture now. And the way we run it is we do have, each building has a site-based team. And each building, working with the principal and assistant principals, meet with parents and work on a building-level goal with the parents. It could be around curriculum, it could be around, we did our whole PBSI curriculum at the elementary buildings through site-based team, transferring our character education programs to the site-based teams of the building. Social emotional curriculum has been worked on through site-based teams. And then we also have district-wide, so we bring all the building site-based teams together twice a year as a district to share the work that we're doing across buildings and also work on some district-wide initiatives. So over the past few years, we were looking at that question about balancing wellness with academic rigor. And we did a book study around Mark Bracken's book, Permission to Feel, and talked about elements in that so that that information, we could talk about where that filters down at the building level into our curriculum. This year, we looked at our character education principles to wonder if those were still relevant. And those principles are respectful dialogue, respect for self and others, and service and kindness. Those principles were written in, I think, around 1997 or 98 and our site-based team, they were created there, so I brought it back to the site-based team to look at. And we've had really rich dialogue and have read some interesting articles around character education and wellness. And I'm going to bring it back to the site-based committee next year to continue to ask, are these the ones that are relevant and should we think about revising these, adding to it? You know, a lot has changed in 20 years and is there anything we need to do to update our character education principles? So that's question one. And we've come up with a lot of ideas about how to do it in terms of engaging the entire community on these questions that sort of we started asking ourselves. So we're going to think about a process next year to involve more community members around the character education principles, possibly revise them. I'll talk about it here when we explore this. And certainly, should we adopt anything or change that, we'll bring it back to the building to sort of bring it back and say, okay, now what does that look like in our classrooms and how do we implement the principles of our character education program?
Tim, what's the process for parents getting involved in site-based?
Great question. So if parents want to be involved in site-based, there's two ways. If you want to be involved at the building-level site-based teams, that would be through the building PTSA reps. They would contact the building VP who would then reach out to them and form a team. We do have a limited number in our plan, but our plan, we will update our plan. We just can't have a million parents involved, but we haven't had that problem in a while. But parents do get involved and it's great. If they want to be involved in the district-wide team, they can reach out to me. So we're always inviting parents. We have just a lot of involvement and a lot of enthusiasm. So there's the building-level teams and I won't go through all the details in the building-level reports. You can read the building-level summary, but you'll see around, at the elementary building, there was a focus on our social emotional learning curriculum that we piloted in third grade this year at Wampus. We're going to extend the pilot to fourth and fifth grade next year and also into first and second grade at Coman Hill and look at character ed and talk about, think about that K5 character education, social emotional learning program. So we're continuing to pilot that. We felt like just one year of a pilot in one grade wasn't enough to really understand the impact. And Gina's been involved in working with the social emotional learning team with the building and knows a lot about the Character Strong program. So I won't, I won't go into the details of the report, but then every building had a focus and it was a really successful year from all the principals. The secondary level with middle and high school, they were really focused on the master schedule and getting feedback and reflecting on the master schedule and making some slight modifications to it based on the feedback they received this year.
Great to see the parents working with administrators and just sit around the table and collaborating themselves.
Yeah, site-based team, if you, yeah, if you really want to get involved in sort of the nitty-gritty details of what we do, site-based team's a good place to do that.
Yeah, that's great.
So thanks.
Internal audit report. So we met in one debate and viewed the findings of the internal audit report for the 2021-22 school year. So now really we just have to adopt the report because we got our questions answered from the auditor. So anybody have any questions before we go for a motion? All right, motion to accept the internal audit.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right. And thanks to you, Kelly, and the team for your work with the auditor because the report was stellar and we appreciate your help and your support of the auditor. So next we go to, ah, celebratory item, BHEF signature grant to approve a grant for flexible and focused seating in the fifth grade, which is an 11,000, just over $11,000 grant.
I want to talk about this grant for a few minutes. This was a singular teacher who wrote an Insta-grant for under $2,500 to do this in her classroom. And the BHEF came back to the teacher and said, this really seems worthwhile as more of a grade. So they went back to the drawing board, got the rest of the teachers on board, and then put the grant through again as a grant for the entire grade. So this is just a great example of the BHEF not just saying, okay, but having the vision to say, is this something that's really important for every kid in that grade? So now we will have a lot more flexible seating, raised desks, lots of different seating opportunities for kids in every single one of those classrooms. So just thanks to the BHEF for being really good listeners and creative thinkers with our teachers. Now so many more kids are going to benefit than before, so.
Wonderful.
Really run well.
And is it a pilot to figure out if it works to do it in other grades or is it like specific to fifth graders?
If we did, we would do it. We would do it in other grades, right? So typical of the BHEF, they'll start something for us so that we could see if we need to take this on as a district, yeah.
Was fifth grade chosen because a fifth grade teacher came forward or was it specific to fifth grade at that age?
No, that teacher came forward. It is very applicable to those fifth graders, no.
Right. So I ask for a motion with gratitude to accept the signature grant.
Awesome. So moved.
A second. All in favor? Thank you, BHEF.
Thank you.
For a great year. So we go to staff reports.
All right, I will start. This will not be long at all, it's only like 40 slides. So, Coman Hill had a wonderful time celebrating kindness and school community. There are some links, they're up on our website so that you could go and see the music and dance performances. I really love the PE teacher, Rob Beaton, you could see him in the middle. He is conducting like this whole dance thing that's happening with all of these kids who are moving with him in this dance. And thank you to the teachers who helped to put that together, Emily Sabatella as well for the music performances. Kids had a great time, it was outside in the playground area. They came together to sing, dance, tell a story. It was just like real old-fashioned elementary school, right? Just fantastic. So, and Mr. Falco and Karen Eldon did an amazing job of talking to the kids about everything they've learned. They have been taking messages every month, whether it's about empathy or caring, kindness, and that have been each theme each month of the school year, and this was really the culminating activity for that. It was pretty awesome. Kids look pretty happy, don't they?
Yep.
Wampus presented Peter Pan Jr. Danielle, who was here tonight, had something to do with the scenes in that. Congratulations to the cast and crew and the production team. They had two performances and they had packed audiences.
Thank you.
It's awesome. Oh, I love this. Coman Hill and Wampus virtual art show. You can go in and see the art show, see each class and a piece of artwork from every single child from K5, which was a pretty amazing undertaking that Pete and the fine arts teachers put together. And it's really worth exploring. You hit each of those buttons and you'll find each teacher and the kids that are in the grades. A lot of work in there and a lot of hours. Ariana Garcia, this is pretty amazing, I want to show you her artwork. She was selected by the Holocaust and Human Rights Education Center during Genocide Awareness and Prevention Month for her piece of art. And a donation in her name will be made to a foundation currently working to support Ukrainian medical community and refugees seeking aid. Now, this is what she wrote to describe her fabric and her sculpture on cardboard, spreading awareness of the issues of genocide in many different areas and to share what these people are forced to do in these concentration camps and what they were forced into. So after she researched all of it, she put together the different pieces, why would it make sense to create a flag out of an old pair of Zara jeans? So this is actually her piece, so you can see the flag in that and just talking about the labor that was taking place in putting those jeans together and she thought that this really represented the genocide that people were facing. Pretty amazing and an amazing award, just so thoughtful. Here she is again. I think Edith has been at more board meetings than any other child in high school. But she won big at Regeneron's ISF. She was awarded third place for, remember she told us all about her storytelling with the fourth graders and the impact on their executive functioning skills. And she was at the fair in Atlanta, Georgia, hosting 1,750 students from 63 countries and territories. Third place, wow, Edith, amazing. Carolina Becaro and Rebecca Geller, they are now going to be our two new students on the Northern Westchester Hospital Junior Leader Council. We have graduating seniors and there's a recruitment process to get other Byron Hill students a part of that. Remember, I'm on the president's council of Northern Westchester Hospital and this is the junior leader council. They came and presented to us this year, as a matter of fact, I was at your house that evening watching it. As a matter of fact, I was at your house that evening watching it. They presented to us virtually. They do pretty amazing volunteer work in the county, through the hospital, and especially public service messages and such. So congratulations to both of them to be accepted. It's pretty unique. Samantha Gresh and Owen Kenny were the recipients of this year's New York State Attorney General's Triple C Award. It's been presented since 2006 to graduating seniors who exhibited three traits, courage, character, and commitment. And they honor seniors whose high school journey included unique circumstances and achievements. And here we have Samantha Gresh. Congratulations to Samantha. She's going to be going to Boston College in the fall. And congratulations to Owen Kenny, and he is going to be majoring in science at Siena in the fall. Fantastic. Triumph Music Honor Society inductees. Oh, look at that name. I haven't heard that before. Edith Bachman, Amelia Chung, Rebecca Frieden, Nora Lowe, and Eliana Morse. So congratulations, Triumph Music Honor Society. Here they are. A trip down Broadway together, conceptualized by the entire Varley Players Company. They went through a journey of song scenes and monologues from shows on and off Broadway. Really great culmination to the year in theater. Now, we have our Byron Hills High School awards ceremony. So they were recognized with various school awards, recognized by organizations including National Merit Scholarship, Section 1 Athletics, New York State School Music Association, Con Edison, Regeneron, College Board, U.S. Presidential Scholars Program, Holocaust and Human Rights Education Center, just to name a few. And congratulations again to the 41 graduating seniors recognized at the 33rd Annual Authentic Science Research Symposium on Wednesday, June 1st. I think all of us were there. Good time had by all. It was pretty amazing. And what a large group, 41 seniors. I think we have like 25 sophomores and 25 juniors currently. And for those 41 seniors to have stuck with science research through COVID, it's pretty amazing. All right, here we have, this was one of the best athletics department senior awards nights ever. I mean, it was absolutely fantastic. Rob and Brett did an amazing job putting that together. We had all of our students from each of the seniors in each of their respective sports who were celebrated, lots of student recognition. Ella Jaworski places for state championship. I don't know if you know this, but this past weekend she qualified for the championship meet for first place to finish Saturday's division 1,500 meters. This week she's heading to Syracuse, best of section one track and field athletes to compete.
You're going to need a bigger sign.
We're going to need a bigger sign. Or maybe this one. All right, so Byron Hills varsity boys tennis, all the rage right now. I think we might have to carry a drum again. Regional champions defeating section four red hook, five, nothing, and now they go on on Friday. So congratulations and good luck to our young tennis team. This was something nice in the examiner, just celebrating our kids, encouraging high school students to advocate for those in need. This is a program that was set up that many of our students are involved in. There are also students from Greeley and a couple of other schools. And this was inspired by a woman, a local woman, who wanted to get kids to understand advocacy and how to go out into their community and find people that they feel they need to advocate for. So it's pretty cool. I like how it kind of happens, it's a school thing, but not a school thing at the same time. Now, Changemaker Project, super fun and exciting. Global Scholars Year Two students participated in it. Cynthia Han was voted first-place winner in the overall category for children's books she wrote and illustrated. Amelia looks amazing, love it. Motivated to take action due to the rise of anti-Asian hate in the wake of the pandemic. And her book shared the journey of a young Asian-American girl who struggles with how she looks compared to her mostly white peers. Ally Cooper was awarded second place for her project, Net Zero. It's her love for tennis and sustainability. Remember, she was here that night visiting with us? Winners in a variety of other category groupings as well that you could see here, tons of our students, just awesome.
Those are from the Global Scholars.
Yep. And they also presented their work at the showcase, this group. I mean, just lots of kids. 2022 Outstanding High Schools. Remember Joanna LeWick? I told you in the past that she got this award. I was home with COVID, but my counterparts here went to see her and celebrate at Smith's Tavern and really nice for her to receive that recognition. And go, as Mr. Walsh says, go BAC. I love that he coined that. Isn't that great? And last but not least, I got my book to read for tonight. This is the second-grade memory book. It's absolutely adorable since Kelly and I did all of that dismissal at Coman Hill for all of that time during COVID. I was testing him on the children today. He remembered them. Really good, really great, amazing. Thank you to our parents.
We had that too, Dr. Spitzer, Kelly.
Oh, yeah, the budget vote. Thank you, Kelly. And I would like to thank our school community for the passing of our budget vote, one of probably the, right, we haven't been here since, correct? Right, this is our first meeting. Seems very long ago, but to thank the community for being informed voters. We had quite a few voters this year, more so than we have had before. It was nice to see people come out to the polls, to ask questions, to zoom into our meetings and to look on the website and see how many hits there are of our video that went out as well, explaining the budget and how we painstakingly put that budget together, looking at, making sure we continue to have programs for our kids, do not sacrifice programs and opportunities, and are also very mindful of our taxpayers and the future of this district. So thank you for the confidence in the school district and what we are doing and for your support in coming out to vote. We are a very sleepy voting town, so it was nice to see so many people come out this year. Thank you, Kelly. You texted me.
She doesn't check her phone. She's not making attention to this.
Oh, yeah, there you are. Thanks. And that's it for me.
All right, any other issue?
Sure, I have a brief report. I just wanted to address some correspondence I've been receiving about the cancellation of this year's United States History and Government Regents Exam. So it was the first administration of the new exam, and let me just back up and explain that. So the New York State has been revising the learning standards in all of the content areas. And once they revised the standards and they implemented the new standards, they're rewriting the Regents Exam to correspond with the new standards. So they're, the first one, we had the new revised Global Regents Exam a few years ago, and now they're revising the U.S. History and Government. So this was meant to be the administration of the new Regents Exam revised to make the new standards. So they had canceled it and there was very little information put out except a brief statement by state. And I just want to repeat for our community that that Regents Exam was canceled by the state, by the State Education Department, not by Byron Hills. And they gave out very little explanation, but I do want to read for those who are curious about the cancellation, what they put out publicly. And they noted that it was canceled, that they had determined that the content had potential to compound student trauma caused by the recent violence in Buffalo. And then they go on to explain that New York State certified social studies teachers developed the questions more than two years ago, and the questions were field-tested to confirm that the exam's content is educationally sound. So that's the process they do is they write questions with teachers, then they field-test them. So it takes a few years till those items actually get published on a Regents Exam. And then they said, however, the tragedy in Buffalo has created an unexpected and unintended context for the planned assessment. In this instance, it is not appropriate to administer the exam with the question that could compound the grief and hardship faced by our school communities. So that was their statement put out and the extent to which they're explaining that they're not revealing what that item was or any other context. I imagine they may use it at a later date or not, I don't know, but they don't seem to be releasing that specific item. So I just wanted to offer what we know from the State Education Department that they put out regarding that cancellation.
Yeah, and no other, I guess.
No other explanation required.
No other explanation, yeah, they don't seem.
Yeah, you know, it's, for me, it's not about the question. Like I trust their educational judgment that the question might not have been okay given the time period, but there was no other option? That's, I, that's.
Same question.
I don't know, was it like a bulk of the test? Was it like, I think something.
Well, remember that the test was redesigned, so there may be like, that what they use is documents, it's document-based questions. This could have been a document and then there'd be a series of questions, like a whole section on the test could be around that one document.
That would have been a great explanation.
So my guess is that it was a document that was probably about gun violence and there was probably a series of questions and things you had to write and analyze based on that. I'm just guessing and stuff like that happened in Buffalo.
Tim, don't say too much more. They're going to try to steal you at State Ed.
Right, well, I guess. And I think, Scott, you addressed another issue that I've actually talked about at board meetings and have done some work with State Ed and trying to communicate and advocate for more modern, let's say, testing than the current Regents process. I mean, it takes several years for an item to go, to be written to go out and, you know, to field-test it until it appears, and they don't have a bank of these items. So it's sort of an archaic process that I've actually talked to the Assistant Commissioner of the Assessment Department about. They sort of hold on to this tradition in New York State that teachers like to write the tests. And I said, I don't think teachers really care anymore. You know, I said, we're in a different age. That was like going back 30, 40 years, 50. I mean, how long has the Regents been in place? Where this sort of process of teacher-written assessments was, they feel like is a tradition. And I said, I think you need to maybe go out to the field and find out if that's still true. I think we need, there's.
Like maybe a psychometrician would be.
Yeah, we've learned so much more about assessment. I think we can write better tests and have a better bank of test items where you can swap out an item if you needed to.
Well, you figure, you have to sort of make a decision. Are the Regents important or are the Regents not important? If the Regents are important, then they need to figure out a way to do this the right way. Because it's, I think the part that just frustrates me a little bit is that if they made a judgment about not administering it, they just, I think, owe to students and parents more explanation than what they gave. Because I think that is an unsatisfactory explanation. They may have good reason, we don't know because we don't have any information, but to not, not get to the bottom of the root cause of why it's, it just resonated the wrong way of all these students that are prepared all year to take what is a very important exam. U.S. History is as important as it gets.
It is. And we've had, I mean, barely a year goes by, we don't have some sort of controversy around the state testing, some other, the computer-based testing with that issues, whether it was the question about the pineapple about five or six years ago, whether it was.
Or whether it was, oh, that was the 3-8 test, but repeating the same question from year four.
Repeating the same question. They had the released items they used last year on tests that we actually gave our kids as practice items. So, you know, there's, yeah, so there's so, every year there's something with the assessments. And I think it's, I think they have to revisit short of catching up with current technology and assessment systems. They could space on a really archaic design and a model.
Yeah.
And the Regents, and if I could just say publicly, because I like to talk about this one, I can, even the scaling of the Regents Exams is archaic in the 100-point scale because it's, it's a scale, but they chose to use zero to 100, which we all interpret as being a percent. And it's so confusing and we're constantly having to explain to students and the families that, say, an 87 on the Regents doesn't mean 87%. It's not like I got 87% correct. It's a scaled score and the 87 is basically the same as a 93 because they use an 85 to 100 as a unit in terms of their, the way they scale and weight.
Is that something you put on their transcript when they're applying to college? Because that could be very beneficial to.
Yeah, so, well, yeah, because it's, they're scaled scores, so it's really, you know, we do like the, they say 85 to 100 is mastery. That's what they call mastery. So that, anything within that is, you've mastered the content. So what I, what I mean by 87 and the 93, you can't really tell the difference that much between those scores. It's not based on percentages. So the way they chose to scale it, they chose 100 points, they didn't have to choose a 100-point scale. They could have done a five-point scale, four-point like they do on the 3-8 test. But they chose 100 and that purposely confused people. And I think there's a lot of confusion around that 100-point scale. And then translating it to a letter grade makes even less sense. So it, because an 85 to 100 should be considered the same score on a scaled system. So it's, there's a lot of issues with the Regents and the grading of Regents and the scaling of the Regents that I keep trying to put that information out and try to advocate with State Ed that they have to look at this. The guys who run the department are pretty good. They, they understand that conceptually, but I probably think the machine is so big that it's hard to make changes is what I suspect.
And then for the U.S. History kids that were going to take the Regents, is I guess what, maybe 10% of their grade? Now, do they just wait?
So what we've asked, what, mislaid in the department chair person has, and worked with the teachers, that they're going to rewrite some other type of final experience for the students and then have that take place of the Regents. Because students sort of do their whole formula on, you know, the quarterly grades and the averages and we didn't want to change that at the last minute. That's not fair to kids. So we'll give some assessment. They are designing assessments that they think are fair culmination and will take that place of that Regents Exam. Because we don't want kids to be working toward like this Regents is going to change my grade and I'm depending on it. We didn't want to pull the carpet out from underneath them. It's not fair.
That's a good.
Why were the Regents Exams dropped to 10% of the students' power grade, probably 15, I think it was?
So some of them used to be 20 back when I was department chair. They were, all were 20, and we've made changes to several of the exams over the years for various reasons. Some have been 10%. I believe some are still 20. You know, there's, it's just thinking about, again, putting all that weight on a Regents Exam. The State Education Department actually says they don't recommend using the Regents for a grade. They sort of put that out publicly. And it's because of, you know, you can't really do that comparison on the zero to 100 scale. It doesn't, it doesn't work that way. It's not really meant to be converted to a percentage. So the state says, we say you shouldn't be using it at all. And there is a movement away from grading Regents. So we've just been trying to play with the formula a little bit because we feel like putting it as a fifth on these Regents Exams that have so many issues with it just doesn't seem equitable and fair to kids. And what we always do is look at if it did count as 20%, would it improve a kid's grade? And if it does, we will give the kid a higher grade. So we always compare 10% to 20%. Generally, it doesn't make that much of a difference in 95% of the cases.
That's what Chris Walsh had said at the last principal's coffee, that he was giving the high school teachers the discretion to use it as up to 20, 20% if they, if it would help each other.
But essentially, it's a benchmark test, right? So if you look at the English Regents, what's our average on the English Regents? 92? 92?
Is the, is.
Right? So, and it's not like a summative piece. It's not saying, okay, they understood everything that they learned in their junior year, that they are going to get this summative assessment of a Regents Exam. It's almost like a benchmark that you have to score at to just say that you're proficient, right? So when it was 20%, we were essentially saying, that's the same as an entire quarter's worth of work. All of those papers kids are writing, all of the tests they're taking, the groups, the projects that they're working on, and it just isn't like in some subjects. You know, you're not studying for the English Regents like you're studying for, you know, the U.S. History Regents or, it's different, like the content is just different. So I look at them as benchmarks more.
And many of the Regents are sort of below our level of standard. I know in math we use, some of them are not, some are harder than others, but for the most part, if I were to write a final exam in Algebra I, it would probably be a lot harder than the Regents Exam. And we've, you know, we've written quarterly exams in Algebra that were a lot harder than the Regents Exam. So we certainly have a standard that is higher. So we just felt like 20% just didn't seem equitable. But we make sure that no student is harmed by lowering it to 10%. 20% would have improved their grade, we'll give them the improved grade, but that happens in a very, very small number of cases.
One snapshot, not fair to the kids.
Does a Regents diploma still exist or that doesn't exist anymore?
Yeah, the state still does, Regents diplomas and advanced Regents, we don't offer that because our local diploma means even more than what a Regents diploma would mean. We just don't have a need to do that. And all of our students would earn Regents dipl, not all, but I'd say 90, maybe 96% of our students would earn a Regents diploma. And pretty much a Regents diploma is what every kid has to get now. But they do have advanced designation diplomas. We just haven't bothered to do it because we didn't have a need. Colleges don't need that designation to know our students are getting a value added to their education. But in a school where there's more disparity and that means something coming out of some school districts.
Thank you, Tim.[1783.12] Thank you, Tim. Anybody else? No? Anybody have a board report? Nope. One is down. The Communications, the Board, there was one regarding faculty member. Anything else? Anybody else to report? Okay. Approval of Board Minutes. I have a motion to approve May 3rd and 17th.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
So there's one, there's one actually edit that I have in the 17th, which is I think that in the Board of Education trustee vote, if the first and second, the votes look like they match, but the first and second place were swapped?
Hmm.
All right, in the minutes. Yeah, just in the minutes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So we just have to switch the order of first and second place.
Yes.
But every, yeah, that's the one tweak.
Yep.
Actually, yeah, that's...
I know what it is.
Oh, yes.
You say it?
All right, so with that one tweak, yeah, then I just revote. All in favor? All right, and motion to adjourn public session.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? All right, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night.